Okay, anything? I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals for Tuesday, February 1st. Will the city call roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Defoe.
Yes.
Ms. Selesny. Mr. Friedman.
I'm here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Weigum.
Here.
Mr. Havus. You have a quorum to do business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
Yes. The city council has recently appointed an alternate board member who's with us tonight. I'd like to introduce Mr. Benjamin Havus, sitting behind me here to the right.
You're welcome. Okay. Any other communications? Okay. So we will move on to the public hearing. The way that we conduct business, for those who have been hearing this before, is the city will call the case by the case number, read a brief description of the case, then we ask the appellant to step forward to the microphone. There is a sign-in sheet, so if you're going to speak, we ask you to sign in, please, with your name and address. We also ask you to verbally state your name and address for the record, and then the appellant will explain to us what they're asking for and why. The city will then read the findings of fact. We will ask the appellant to agree with those facts or add any other facts they wish to at that time. Then we will turn it over for a staff recommendation, and then we will open public comment. So if you wish to speak on public comment... Is your mic set on? Not on? No.
Oh, sorry about that.
Push the button.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, yeah, I didn't hear the echo. There it is. Sorry about that. Does anyone in the audience need me to repeat what I was saying about how we conduct business? No? Okay. So if you're here to speak on public comment, we'll prompt you at that time. We also ask you to step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and then give your comments. Then we'll turn it over to the board to deliberate and make a decision, and then move on to the next case if there is one. So with that, will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Appeal notice regarding zoning board of appeals case number 21-26. The appellant, Scott Milliken of Habitat for Humanity owner, is requesting the following variance from the board. A variance of four feet of west side yard building setback requirements, 30 feet required, 26 feet proposed. A variance of four feet of east side yard building setback requirements, 30 feet required, 26 feet proposed. The property is located on the north side of Westland Drive between Evergreen Road and Prescott Street at 20436 Westland Drive, Sidwell Parcel 2434-428012, zoned RT, attached single-family residential. Appeal is to section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45, the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. Staff requests that this case be tabled to a certain date of March 1st.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a motion to that, please?
I move that the case number 21-26 be moved to March 1st.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Uh, well, the, I guess, we don't need to call roll individually, do we, since we're not on Zoom anymore? So all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. That sounds like unanimous, so five to zero. Next case, please.
Appeal notice regarding zoning board of appeals case number 22-01. The appellant, Brian Mooney of Integrity Building Group, contractor representing Detroit Marthoma Church owner, is requesting the following variance from the board. A variance of six feet eight inches of north side yard setback due to the air handling unit's encroachment. 15 feet required, 5 feet 4 inches provided. Variance to permit 47 linear feet of fencing in lieu of the unpierced masonry wall requirements along the east property line southwest corner of site. The properties are located on the east side of Lhasa Road between 10 Mile Road and McClung Avenue at 24480 and 24518 Lhasa Road. Sidwell Parcels IDs 2427-101-011 and 2427-101-012, zoned R2, single-family residential and OS office services. This appeal is to section 5.194, Article 22, and section 5.33, Article 4, Chapter 45 of the Southfield Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant present?
I'm John Bigger.
Okay. If you could speak to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Bigger. I'm from Dearborn, Michigan, at 20635 Audette.
Okay. Is that mic on? Can others hear? There we go. Okay, great. Thank you. Could you explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Yes. We originally had the mechanical unit closer to the building and further back away from the parking lot and the area, and with some changes that had to happen inside for what the church wanted to do, we had to relocate the unit a little bit, and it got moved forward a little bit further, and it was a lot bigger than we initially had planned, and so it got pushed a little bit closer to the property line. Fortunately, it's, you know, near the back of the adjacent building, which hasn't had any windows or anything next to it back there, and with appropriate screening, which we can install with the fencing and the shrubbery, we think we can accommodate the encroachment that we've made on the easement for the item number, item number one in the back. Um, or that's item number two, I'm sorry. Item number one, we were hoping to find the exact same fence that was installed originally. I think it was about 20 years ago, and we could not match that fence exactly, and so we were hoping for some relief on the type of fence. We had proposed a wood fence. We can get a precast fence, but it won't look the same, so it'll be, you know, same material but have different patterns and stuff on it. So we're looking for either some relief or direction on what is appropriate for the fencing along the rear property line of the building, of the parking lot.
Okay. Thank you. If you'll stay right in the front row for us, please. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZBA case 22-01, the appellant, Brian Mooney, excuse me, of Integrity Building Group, contractor representing Detroit Marthoma Church owner, is requesting the following variances from the board. A variance of six feet eight inches of north side yard setback due to an air handling unit encroachment. 15 feet required, 5 feet 4 inches provided, and a variance to permit 47 linear feet of fencing in lieu of the unpierced masonry wall requirement along the east property line where abutting the new parking lot. And this is just a change, a minor clarification from the legal notice. The properties are located on the east side of Lhasa Road between 10 Mile Road and McClung Avenue at 24480 and 24518 Lhasa Road. Sidwell Parcel IDs 2427-101-011 and 2427-101-012, zoned R2, single-family residential and OS office service. The subject property is currently developed with the Detroit Marthoma Church in a recently constructed parking lot. The property to the north is zoned OS office service and is developed the Loris Academy Charter School. The property to the south is zoned R2, single-family residential, and is developed with the Wellness Beyond Words Counseling Center. The properties to the east are zoned R2, single-family residential, and are developed with single-family homes fronting Lois Lane. The properties to the west across Lhasa Road are zoned OS office service and RE, single-family residential, and are developed with the People Driven Credit Union and the City of Southfield Fire Station Number 5 Headquarters and Training Center. The total site contains 6.16 acres of land with approximately 500 feet of frontage along Lhasa Road and a depth of 455.5 feet. The approved site plan reflects a 1,898 square foot sanctuary addition and construction of an ancillary parking lot for the church. Upon inspections requested by the church to obtain their certificates of occupancy for the sanctuary addition and to final out permits for both the sanctuary addition and parking lot construction, the planning department noted several discrepancies between the approved site plans and on-site conditions warranting the submittal of as-built site plans. Many of the discrepancies meet zoning ordinance requirements and can be handled as part of the standard review for the as-built site plan submittals. However, the air handling unit encroachment and the fence in lieu of a wall both require variances. The air handling unit apparently could not be located inside the sanctuary as originally intended and approved as part of the site plan approval and was therefore placed on the exterior of the building. The proposed site plan indicates additional screening of the unit with an eight-foot-high cedar fence and six columnar junipers. The air handling unit abuts a windowless portion of the Loris Academy building and is only marginally visible from the Loris Academy parking lot and Marthoma parking lot. It's not visible from Lhasa Road. When the church was originally constructed in 1997, there were resident concerns at that time regarding installation of a wood fence in lieu of a masonry wall along the east and south property lines. At that time, planning staff supported the desires of the residents, and city council agreed, adding a condition that a six-foot-high masonry wall was required along both the east and south property lines. The city has received two recent objections to the variance request for the fence in lieu of a wall from adjacent residents who directly abut the church to the east regarding the variance, again, the variance request of the fencing in lieu of the wall. Both neighbors cited the 1997 city council meeting and conditions of site plan approval as well as current issues pertaining to trespassing noise and littering from the church site onto their respective residential properties.
Okay. Thank you. Does the appellant agree with those facts, please?
Yes, that's the gist of the issue.
Okay. Is there, that's fine. That's fine. Will the staff read the recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is for favorable consideration of the six-foot, eight-inch north side yard setback variance due to the air handling unit encroachment. 15 feet required, 5 feet 4 inches provided, with the following conditions. The appellant must continue to work with the planning department to provide all necessary revised drawings reflecting the required fence and landscape screening as well as any other pertinent information and as-built conditions. This recommendation is based upon the following. The proposed side yard setback variance will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties. The unit abuts a windowless portion of the neighboring building and parking lots, and the city is requiring additional screening, which the appellant has provided in way of fencing and landscaping. Further, the unit is not visible from Lhasa Road. Staff's recommendation is for denial of the variance to permit 47 linear feet of wood fencing in lieu of the unpierced masonry wall requirement along the east property line where abutting the new parking lot for the following reasons. The request to waive the wall in lieu of fencing is a self-created hardship and economic in nature. There's no physical reason why a masonry wall cannot be constructed as required by the zoning ordinance. As part of Marthoma Church's original site plan approval, city council required construction of a wall along the entire east property line. The wall should be extended as necessary to maintain the spirit and intent of the original approval. Fencing in lieu of a six-foot masonry wall in this area could adversely affect the surrounding properties, and in fact, planning and building have received objections from two of the property owners directly abutting the church to the east citing ongoing issues of trespassing noise and littering.
Okay. Thank you. We will now open public comment. So if you wish to speak to public comment, now would be your time to step to the podium and state your name and address for the record and give your comments to the board, please.
My name is Michael Psakis, and my address is 24529 Lois Lane. You know, 25 years ago, I was standing at the very same place with the very same objective because Marthoma Church from Detroit...
Sir, if you could just make sure you're speaking right to the microphone, it would really help us to be able to hear you clearly. Nope, right in front of it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm trying.
I'd be better.
25 years ago, Marthoma Church was built, and we had the very same hearing like here, and they did not want to build the required by city ordinance masonry wall. At that time, planning department, zoning department under Mr. Banda strongly supported us, and city council also support us, and we have with the church written agreement that our properties will be separated by masonry wall six foot tall. Six foot tall. Yeah. I don't know the reason why they want to negate on this agreement. By the way, City of Southfield has a copy of this agreement as well. What we have now, we have four residential properties, former residential properties. One of them, two of them belong now to Marthoma Church. It was a very heavy wooded area. Now it's completely erased. It's like, and the same with Loris Academy. So we have huge parking lot, and now we have an abstracted view on Lhasa Road, which never was seen before. We have noise from Lhasa Road. We have lights from Lhasa Road, and we have garbage from church because their garbage collection place is right to this fence of wall. And when truck load, lift container, part of them ends, because of wind, ends on my property. So I am asking this body to do a right thing and protect residents. All of our neighbors, some of them here, don't want any patching. We have already very long masonry wall. We don't want any patch by fence or whatever. We have, we want to have this agreement fulfilled, and masonry wall probably will help reduce noise, reduce lights from the street, Lhasa Road, sorry, and somehow protect us with garbage, like paper plates, garbage bags, and so on, which regularly, regularly, at summertime, I have on my property. So I hope you will do the right thing and deny the second variance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone else that wishes to speak to public comment, please step to the microphone and again, state your name and address for the record, please.
Well, my name is Brian Walker. My address is 24565 Lois Lane, and my property is immediately east of the Marthoma Church and immediately east of the existing masonry wall. So I'm here in support of my neighbors as they were here in support of me, let's say, about 24, 25 years ago, and in support of requiring the wall. As Michael was mentioning, you know, before, the properties, you know, to our west used to be woods, and when you erase the woods, it needs a barrier because even during the time that they were doing construction of the original edifice, that became the shortcut from Lhasa Road to our street, Lois Lane, and the next street that's east of us as well. So a lot of traffic, also, as he mentioned, with the trash control. I think they have a dumpster and one of the trucks that picks it up overhead, and I think the wind is picking up trash and blowing it into our property, even over the wall, but without the wall, I think it would be even more so. The other thing that I just wanted to make sure that is taken into account, I've been dealing with for the last 25 years, a drainage issue. Now, I think the church is going to fix that as part of this phase of the construction from a meeting that we had in 2019 when they were planning this expansion, and I submitted at that time for consideration for getting my drainage issue because the masonry wall was there, plus I think they built up maybe a foot or so of sod and soil on their side of the wall, so any natural drainage that was there before was gone and interrupted. The city had offered immediately after that was noted to fix the issue. The church was not supportive of that fix, even though the city was going to pay for it, just because they were concerned that it might overload or have some other type of bearing on their property and the function of their drain system. So I think, again, I just wanted to make sure that as this new fence is considered, that it also be taken into account what the natural course of drainage is for the properties that now would have that fence adjacent to it. So those are my thoughts, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public comment?
Chair Franklin, president of Lois Lane Association. I've been hearing the neighbors...
Could you give us your address, too, please?
24580 Lois Lane.
Thank you.
I've been hearing the neighbors complaining about the trash, about the draining problem for years, but I thought it was taken care of. And when the, you know, the pandemic and what we went through with Lois Academy, I thought everything was, you know, it seems like, you know, we try to live with the businesses, but the business keep on trying to encringe on us, on our, you know, quietness, the trash. It's just, you know, it's like they taking advantage of us because we're not saying nothing, and so now people are starting to speak up. It's just, we tried, you know, we thought this was taken care of, and it wasn't taken care of. So hopefully this time it can be taken care of. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. This is your last opportunity if you wish to speak for public comment. Seeing none, we will close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Weigum?
Yeah. This is something that the board faced before Bergen Nine Mile Church. Same, same issue, and it was a money-saving thing, and I agree with the residents. There should be a block wall there separating the two, and I support the city's recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I, like Mr. Weigum, I support the city's recommendations as well. I don't understand why, in writing, it says that they're supposed to build a six-foot masonry wall, and they're asking for, to do something else and hoping that maybe, you know, 25 years have passed and people will change their minds. I just, I think a deal is a deal, and then on top of that, the residents are having their issues. So regardless of that, I'm still supportive of the city's findings, and I support the, that they would, they do need to erect a six-foot masonry wall.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I, I'm a part of the, you know, the city grant, and I just have a question, I guess, I guess for the city. Similar to Mr. Rogers was mentioning, there's talk of the gradient to the masonry wall. The ordinance, the zoning ordinance calls for a six-foot masonry wall. Is that correct?
If I might, through the chair to Mr. Friedman, yes. It requires any commercial to non, to residential zone, yes. It has to be separated by a six-foot masonry wall.
Okay. So, you know, I, you know, it, to me, it has nothing to do with the deal they made. What it more has to do with the zoning ordinance requires a six-foot masonry wall. That's the rest, the neighbors don't want it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Havus?
I agree with the city's inclination. I support the neighboring members.
Okay. Thank you. Sarah, I do have one question. The comment about drain, was drainage looked at at all during this site review, do we know?
If I might, through the chair, yes. Engineering, our engineering department does review the plans.
Okay.
So it was originally approved, you know, with the wall. So yes.
Okay.
It was reviewed by our engineering department.
Okay. And would, I mean, building the wall and having to build up to create the stability for the wall, will that create any further drainage issues?
If I might, through the chair, or to the chair again, in fact, I believe, and I don't know the specifics, but I believe that engineering was preferring the wall because of some possible water issues between the properties.
Okay.
And I believe that it was something that they felt could help alleviate that by stopping the water flow.
Okay.
So I don't know the specifics of that, or...
But it's been taken into consideration as part of the review?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, that, that works. That was one of my, just my concerns from what was being raised. Yeah, I mean, I agree that there is already a wall there covering about three-quarters of the parking lot, it seems. I think the appropriate response, not only the ordinance requires it, but, you know, we generally support continuing what is there and what's present and creating a barrier. And I think certainly if neighbors are dealing with trespassing and dealing with the trees that have been cut down, I mean, that does impact their property and their value of their property and their views from their property, and that matters. So I also agree with my colleagues and will support the city's recommendation. Mr. Rogers, would you make the motion for us?
In regards to case number 22-01, the appellant, Brian Mooney of Integrity Building Group, contractor representing Detroit Marthoma Church owner, is requesting the following variances from the board. One, variance of six-foot-eight inches of north side yard setback due to air handling unit encroachment. 15 feet required, 5 feet 4 inches provided. And two, a variance to permit 47 linear feet of fencing in lieu of the unpierced masonry wall requirement along the east property line slash southwest corner of site. The properties are located on the east side of Lhasa Road between 10 Mile Road and McClung Avenue at 24480 and 24518 Lhasa Road. I make a, I move to make a motion to, for favorable consideration of the first variance of the six-foot-eight inches of north side yard setback due to air handling unit encroachment. 15 feet required, 5 feet 4 inches provided, with the following conditions, that one, the appellant must continue to work with the planning department to provide all necessary revised drawings reflecting the required fence and landscape screening as well as all other pertinent information and as-built conditions. The motion I'm making is based on the following. The proposed side yard setback variance will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties. The unit butts a windowless portion of the neighboring building and parking lots, and the city is requiring additional screening, which the appellant has provided in the way of fencing and landscaping. Further, the unit is not visible from Lhasa Road. With regards to the second variance, I make a motion to deny the variance to permit 47 linear feet of fencing in lieu of the unpierced masonry wall requirement along the east property line where abutting the new parking lot for the following reasons. The request to waive the wall in lieu of fencing is a self-created hardship and economic in nature. There's no physical reason why the wall cannot be constructed as required by the zoning Two, as part of the Marthoma Church's original site plan approval, city council required construction of a wall along the entire east property line. The wall should be extended as necessary to maintain the spirit and intent of the original approval. The wall should be extended as necessary to maintain the spirit and intent of the original approval. And lastly, fencing in lieu of a six-foot masonry wall in this area could adversely affect the surrounding properties. And in fact, planning and building has received objections from two of the property owners directly abutting the church to the east citing ongoing issues of trespassing noise and litter.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, I think that was also unanimous, so five to zero. So part of the request is approved for the side yard setback and part of it is denied for the request for fencing in lieu of a unpierced masonry wall. That concludes our public hearing. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be approval of minutes. We have none to approve. Next item is discussion of our upcoming meeting on February 15th.
Yes, on February 15th, we'll have one case, a residential case, 2525, 252-
That's too many numbers.
There's an extra number there. It's 25249 Southwood Drive.
Okay, is it a fence case?
This is a new construction and I believe it's for height and setback.
Okay.
What did she say?
It's a new construction for height and setback.
I can't, I can't make you out. My ears don't, don't pick you up very well.
Subback, side yard setback? Oh, lot coverage?
Lot coverage.
Right, it was lot covered. If I may?
Yes.
Yeah, it was lot coverage and height.
Okay, lot coverage and height, okay. Okay, so miscellaneous, I was just curious if we had any further discussion to occur if any decisions had been made on not getting paper files and moving to electronic files.
I will leave that up to the board.
Okay. Anybody have any opinions? I mean, I think I offered that I would be interested in rather having it emailed to me rather than this.
You guys can. I want the paper.
That's fine, and that's what we said. We said we could do both. All right.
I'm a paper guy, so.
If you want electronics, speak up, tell Brianna, they can tell the appellant that they can produce, provide fewer copies. If you want paper, it's totally fine. They're already providing it. We're just thinking we could save them a few sets potentially. You know what? I actually forgot about this meeting as well. I forgot it about three times since you dropped the envelope. Yeah, I actually, I actually almost made plans tonight, so.
Those are useful envelopes.
Okay, anybody else have any other miscellaneous?
Jody, before you move on.
Yes.
I didn't hear what Jason or Ben would like.
Okay.
Do you want paper?
Oh, I'm a paper man. I like, I like files, lots of them.
Okay.
I would like to know who Mr. Havas is. He's an alternative?
Yep, he was appointed an alternate. Would you like to introduce yourself to us?
Sure, I mean, I was recently appointed. I live in Southfield for the past few years or so and I want to get more involved with the city, so, there I am.
Sounds about how we all got involved, yeah.
How many, how many alternates do we have?
Right now, if I may?
Just Mr. Havas.
Just one?
Yes.
Just one.
Yeah, so, and-
The other one just kind of figured it out.
Right, Ms. Selesny. So it's usually a five-member board. Ms. Selesny is our other member. She is currently uncomfortable with the COVID surging cases. And so she has asked to, you know, she doesn't plan to attend until she feels a little more safer coming out into the community. However, we may not need you for every meeting. I think you are always welcome to attend. If we do have five board members, then you wouldn't vote. I think, again, we've never had this experience, but I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with you expressing your opinions if you felt like attending or wanted to attend. Because I'll be honest with you, in my opinion, I mean, I think I've been on the board seven or eight years. When I first started on the board, if I would have only come once or twice a year, I don't know that I would be familiar enough with the different types of cases that we deal with. Our volume just isn't that high. People tell me, Mr. Weigum can probably speak to this because Jason and, and Mr. Friedman joined after I joined the board, but they used to have ten cases a night. Like, you know, I mean, they just-
Not very often, but very commonly, six to seven.
Yeah, and we, I mean, we've never, we've, maybe like, if we have four, I'm surprised, right? And, and we see a lot of similar cases. We see commonly fenced cases, common sign cases, lot coverage, setback. Those are, I think, probably the most common cases that we see. But every once in a while, we'll get a strange one. Sarah likes to bring us strange ones, like special uses. And we don't really know what to do with special uses because they're so rare. But I, I mean, that would be my recommendation. You are welcome to do whatever you wish. We probably would just need to maybe send an email before meetings now, whereas you used to send us the electronic invite, send a meeting about attendance and then, you know, Mr. Havas can make a decision on whether he wants to attend or not.
Benjamin, I didn't, I didn't catch, and you need to speak loudly into here because I have a hard time hearing, into the microphone. What, what is your background?
Like, in specifically?
It's whatever you would like to share.
I mean, I grew up in Farmington Hills, and I've lived here over the past few years.
I can't hear.
In property management.
Whatever that was, I didn't hear.
Okay, yeah, he works in property management. He works, works in property management. Okay, I think that's it. Can I have a motion to adjourn? And a second? All right, all those in favor?